Good evening. It is Monday, May 4th. We do have to say it. May the 4th be with you. This is the Town of Rutland, Office of the Select Board, virtual meeting for the evening. It is 6:02 PM. This meeting is officially being opened and called to order, and I am going to, no pun intended, Zoom through the announcement of open meeting recordings. Meetings of the Select Board are recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access Television and YouTube pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Rutland Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at Rutland's website, townofrutland.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner: by watching Rutland Community Television Live, Channel 192, or on the Town's website, townofrutland.org, or by viewing a recording of the meeting on the Town's YouTube page following the meeting. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Rutland's website a video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Thank you very much. Jumping right along, we have approval of Treasury Warrant 23 and payroll. Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Treasury Warrant Number 23 and payroll.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Stelling's eye.
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Walker eye.
Dubai unanimous. Thank you. We have two sets of minutes.
I have a question on, can we do them separately? Because I have a question on the one. So I'll make a motion to approve April 21st, 2020 virtual meeting of the Select Board minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion on this one? No? Hearing none? All in favor?
Residency eye.
Waitman eye.
Walker eye.
Dubai? Thank you. Unanimous? And April 23?
That's what I have a question on. Should I make the motion and then have it for discussion? Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to approve April 23rd, 2020 virtual meeting of the Select Board for discussion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Thank you. Leah?
My question, and this is my own clarification. I think in the minute at the end, it said that we, as a board, would recommend to, I'm pulling them up, sorry. Following the discussion, the board would like to recommend that all items be removed from the warrant with the exception of deficits and the CPR machine and the LED sign. Mike will put this information together in a memo and share it with the FinCom, with the Finance Committee. I wasn't, I don't remember necessarily saying for the special that we were comfortable pulling everything. I know that we pretty much had said everything was on the table and everything could come off the table, and we were really looking for that discussion to have with FinCom. I don't know how picky we want to be about the minutes. Maybe I'm remembering things incorrectly.
I think, Leah, I remember it the same way you just described, where I think we were just having a preliminary discussion about it, and that was my impression as well.
So Leah, how would you feel about changing "would" to "might"?
Yeah, I think that that would be better.
Is that...
What paragraph are you looking at? What number?
At the, very, if you scroll all the way down, the second one up from adjournment. Following their discussion.
Would it be prudent to just say that we discussed the items and talked about the possibility of revisiting them with FinCom, just to kind of leave it open for further discussion? Because I know that's kind of what we had planned, versus indicating we're going to go one way or the other with it.
So the other option we have here would be to have Tamika take another look at the video and rephrase it. We can bring it back next meeting for approval. Unless somebody has texts you wanted to change it to, either way is fine.
I don't specifically have texts. I was just kind of remembering it as we were putting, willing to have everything on or everything off, or piecewise, there, however that needed to go. So I don't know how best to phrase it, and maybe, like I said, I didn't look at the video, so maybe my memory was not right either. So why I wanted a discussion. Sorry, the light behind me is all crazy now. Sorry.
I think we all remember it the same way. It wasn't a definitive sort of, we're definitely doing this. It was an ongoing discussion. So yeah, again, we could tape all this for the next time, and Tamika could take another look, or we can have language changed and go forward with it.
I'd be comfortable, I was gonna say, I'd be comfortable tabling it, and then I'll make an effort to take a look at it in advance, once Tamika sends it out, or whatever, and have something prepared if it's not, you know.
Great. Jeff, are you comfortable withdrawing your second?
Yes, withdraw the second for a review.
And Leah, the motion is withdrawn, yes?
Yes, I'll withdraw the motion.
All right, so we're gonna hold these for next agenda, review of that last year. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tamika. Sorry for the extra work.
Keep or watch yet more TV.
I know, I know.
Michael, public comment?
Yes. Let me, I did not see any in the email when I started. The chat function is having an issue right now with Zoom, so if anyone who's in the video would like to do so, you can use the reactions that are at the bottom of the screen to use that. That will show up on my screen, and I will let the board know that you have done that. Once again, I don't see anything in the Rutland Public Comment email at this time.
And just for people watching, right now, we have a list of 19 participants via Zoom. Some are on phone, most are not visible, as you know, and we have, looks like one hand raised, Mike?
Yes, from Mr. Sean Moore. Sean, let me, I might have to unmute you here. All right, Sean, you are unmuted, and you may turn on your video at this time if you wish.
There we go. All right. I thought I had this light situation fixed. The, concerning the town meeting, does everybody hear me?
Yep, you are a little...
Glitching?
Yeah, it should work out.
Okay. On the warrant articles, I already, how can I put this? I was in the process of having the citizen's petition put in to have an article put for the meeting. How's that gonna go about? Is it, should it be put off for the next for the fall, or the signatures that I have, do I still submit them to Anita?
So you... Anita is on this call as well.
Oh yeah, there she is. So you missed the deadline for this town meeting for petition. And the only thing you need to keep in mind for special town meeting, and Anita can give you the exact numbers, is that the required signature number for a special is higher than for an annual.
Well, I understand that. Is there any consideration because of this whole COVID pandemic is allowing any considerations for late submits, or may it still do a floor motion? Isn't that right?
Correct.
So just to answer his question more fully, we did not make any changes to the schedule for submission of articles. The articles closed as listed on the date that was originally set. The only thing we've been moving forward as time, as things are changing, are the actual physical meeting dates. Anybody else for public comment? No?
I see no one in the email at this time, and no other reactions. Jeff, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, I thought we understood that we're gonna ask the fire chief, police chief to go first. Maybe get those guys, because I know they got a meeting to go to.
All right, we did. Okay, so under Old Business, we're actually skipping, if anybody is looking at their online agenda, so under number 10, numeral 10, Old Business, we have the discussions of the annual town election and the annual and special town meetings. We have our town clerk, we have our police chief, we have our fire chief, all here tonight in part to discuss that. So Mike, how did you...
We also have the Chair of our Board of Health here as well for this discussion in place of our health agent who is occupied somewhere else. We got the Chair of the Board of Health here to have, join in the discussion as requested.
Very glad to have you, Scott. Mike, how, well, actually, do the chiefs have a preference on how we do this? Do you want to revisit where we were last time?
Sure. You all should be unmuted at this time and able to start your videos if you so choose. Where we left off the last time is we were discussing possible dates to hold both the town meeting and the annual town election. This raised some questions as to what our public safety concerns were with regard to the current pandemic situation. As you remember, the town, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen, at the beginning of last month voted to officially postpone both. Those votes are still in effect. The governor's legislation that was, excuse me, the legislation that the governor signed that is in effect allows us to postpone the town election no later than or on June 30th. The town meeting can happen after, and if it does happen after June 30th, the town goes into a 1/12 budget, in which case this current year's budget is divided by 12, and that's the town's maximum allotment that the town is required, allowed to spend, excuse me, and any changes in charges that are over, what we are spending this year in that month, come directly out of our free cash allotment. I did misspeak, and I found that out after the meeting last week. We cannot roll over our 1/12 allotment. So if you don't use it, you do not have that amount to carry over into the next 1/12. However, if you do adopt your budget, then everything counts towards that new budget that has been adopted. This could change again, because this is the first time municipalities have been allowed to go into a 1/12 budget, and the Department of Revenue is putting those regulations, or working on those regulations as we speak. But that is where we left off. The question came with how do we safely hold town meeting and the town election? How do we best protect our residents, our voters, and our election workers, and so on from there? So it was requested that we get the personnel who is on the call with us now to join in the discussion, and as we said earlier, they do have another engagement to go to later on for some of them, so we have put those earlier on the agenda. Well, thank you.
Thank you. So if everybody wants to find it in your Google Drive, we've got that timetable that was made up for us with the dates and the deadlines based on meeting dates and when we would have to vote. Anita, do you want to jump in here and give us some sense of where you are today compared to a couple weeks ago?
Yeah, can you hear me? Well, we are already working at really promoting the early voting by mail, but it would be helpful to set this, maybe we should talk about the election first. If we set the town election date, that just helps us to move forward with the voter registration deadline and getting more of the information out. When I took a look at the calendar, it seems to me if we want to stick to a traditional Monday, that Monday, June 22nd is probably a good fit, because I believe you have, it would be, what, the 15th and the 29th are your board meetings, so in between would work. And we're really gearing up and have come up with a lot of ideas of how to really, like I said, promote the early voting by mail. I even took a look back to see what voting numbers we've had over the last six years at annual town meetings, and is that as low, I mean, town election, it's as low as 354 in 2017, where there were no races and no questions, to a high of 1187 in 2014, and there were two contested races and a dead exclusion that year. So my guess is that this election with the one contested Select Board race will fall somewhere in between that. Some of the things that we've done, Paul put a notice on table, which we're gonna expand, about the availability of early voting by mail and the availability to find the application that needs to be turned in. And then Nancy Nichols is including information for all seniors with their main newsletter that's going out shortly. And I talked to Seth, and we're gonna make applications available in the public safety building for those people who can't, who either don't have a computer or don't have a printer, so they can pick up any application form. We've ordered a new Dropbox just for, well, for town clerk and for ballots that ships next Monday, so we hope to have it in the ground by Friday. And it's got stars on it, and it says ballot Dropbox. I think that'll help. Damian reached out to Steiner Signs, and we received a quote today, but we really haven't had a chance to take a good look at it. The idea is to put some small signs with information on how to early vote, and then also at the right time, you know, when the polling hours would be open, to leave out some on the common and a few other areas in town. And that's about what we've been doing so far. As for, I talked to Seth today, and I still have concerns about staffing the election for the full, the full day from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And we can open, open the polls as late as noon, and then they would have to close by 8:00, but Seth and I talked about maybe a possibility of noon to 6:00 PM. That way it would hit anybody that's gone from town during normal business hours. And, but I'm pretty confident that we can, we can reach 99% of the voters by early vote and then still have the polls open for, by the time for those who actually would rather deposit their ballot themselves.
Sheila, if I could just pipe in to add to that, based on some questions that my office has received since our last meeting, the town by law that's currently in effect does have to allow for early mail-in voting, and it does have to allow for a minimum of four hours of in-person voting that cannot be started later than noon, as Anita said. Those are legally required of us, not stuff that the town has elected to do. The town did not choose to do mail-in voting. That's something that the state is requiring us to do because of the current pandemic situation. So that was a question that my office was asked a lot, so I just wanted to clarify that on top of what Anita said.
So Anita, I think I heard June 22nd, would the chiefs and the Chair of the Board of Health like to comment on that date?
I think that's perfect. I think, you know, if we can push the whole mail-in is key. You know, obviously, the less contact or less people having to wait in line or, you know, risk any type of interaction with other people is better. I think that's, this is the easier of the two. I think the, the meeting might be the tough one we want to figure out, but I think the voting is, if there is an easier, it's the easier one, and I like the way we're going.
So you, your comfort level, as far as, I mean, technically, the 29th was the last, last possible. You're okay with 22?
Mitch has his hand up, Sheila. I don't know if you can see that.
I just have a question. I guess, you know, we talked about this a little bit a couple weeks ago, and, you know, I really, I would like to not see a reduction of the normal polling hours. I've heard from a lot of constituents that would prefer to go to the polls. I guess my only concern with shortening them is, you know, we can make as much effort as we want to be able to reach people by early voting or by mail. We shouldn't really push that. But at the same time, there's going to be a certain subset of people that would prefer to go vote in the polls to practice their normal democratic process. If we shorten the hours, is there a risk that just that same amount of people that's gonna show up regardless is going to be jam-packed into those four to six hours versus the whole day? It just seems to me like we should have as much access to the voting process during this as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you. So I think we'll probably circle back to that. Let me ask the chiefs, I think you were clear that you probably have to leave in the next 10 minutes or so. Thoughts on safety, security, including what Mitch said, which is, you know, will compressed hours mean a compression of crowds at the polls?
Seth, you want to go?
You can go.
Okay, I'm fine with that plan. Actually, I think if you compress the hours, you're gonna get more people compacted into a smaller timeframe. So, I mean, keeping it open the regular hours probably makes more sense to me. And we can take plenty of precautions. We can do one way in, one way out. Everything's one way, and we're fine staffing it whenever. I think if, you know, a department store or a grocery store can take enough precautions to be open for a full day, we can be open for a polling station.
My biggest problem with all day is really staffing it, because right now, the state hasn't allowed us to reduce the number of staff. So for each polling location, we have to have two people at the in-and-out desk, two, both of those desks, someone at the ballot box, a clerk, and then one warden at NAQAG, and one warden at a library. And unfortunately, just based on the age of our election workers, I see a real problem staffing, because nobody works all day. I mean, the other alternative is to try to bring in new election workers, but it's also, there's a considerable amount of training that goes along with that. And actually, I'm gonna lose one of my key workers because a family member is on the ballot. So that was also went into my decision to try to reduce the hours.
So Anita, the reduction of the hours then really doesn't have as much to do with safety concerns as does staffing, which to me wouldn't justify shortening the hours for, you know, a functioning town democratic process.
Just, just, just by the breakup of having three different locations, and if we push the early voting, I don't see any, any lines or any problem at all. Seth reached out to me a couple of weeks ago and offered masks and gloves and masking tapes so that it wouldn't be that busy at the polls. We're already trying to figure out ways to, you know, use disposable cans, really spread out the booths. But I honestly don't believe that it would be an issue of, of more crowding if we, if we shorten the hours, but...
As Anita said, we had discussed this a couple weeks ago about trying to make the process as seamless as possible for voters to coming in. If they don't have a mask, with the new regulations, we can provide them with a mask. We can have them, you know, hand sanitize on the way in, have them do the voting process. As Chief Monaco said, basically, one way in, one way out. They return their ballot, and they hand sanitize again on the way out, and then they leave. I think we just gotta look at, historically, what is our voting turnout in early morning hours? So I, it could be looked at.
Our, I can probably provide quite a bit of that, because our ballot box attendees keep track of the numbers that come through at different times of day. I can tell you that retirees who tend to make up a good portion of Precinct 3, which is basically a circle around the center of town, they're the ones that vote early. Precinct number 2, which is like the Vista section of, also Palma Gasset over, and then down Main Street toward Honey Farms, that, that precinct tends to vote later in the day. But not, it's pretty much shut down after 7:00 anyway. And the end of town election for years and years was always 10:00 to 8:00 PM. But I get, I get the concerns about disenfranchising voters, but I really am, I'm really concerned about a staffing issue. And I, and I don't think it'll, it's shortening the hours will cause more congestion, but...
Anita, we have, oh, I'm sorry, Sheila, go ahead.
I was gonna say, Mike, could you or Anita confirm for us, there was a brief discussion last time about compressing the precincts, and whether or not that would save on staffing or not change anything?
I kind of missed that, Sheila, sorry.
Consolidating precincts, and if that's gonna save on our staffing levels.
That, that would also incur a real expense, because the notice would have to go out to registered voters, so...
Yeah, if we change a location, we have to mail something out to everyone.
I, there is, I have seen a little bit of talk about the state reducing the number of people that we need to man any spot, you know, and maybe with just one person at the check-in table and one at the checkout table, but...
So do you think then, can we then perhaps, to move this forward as a board? Because I'm hearing from both chiefs that they think this can be run safely and effectively. I know we heard from Chief Monaco that he thought maybe the reduced hours followed with crowding, and then we heard from Anita that saying that she has some staffing concerns, but that the state is maybe providing more information about this as we move forward. Should we then, could we set the date as the board and then hold off for a couple of weeks to set the hours, waiting for Anita to receive some clarity?
I don't see why we couldn't vote that. And that would at least give us a good day.
I just wanted to point out that Jeff does have his hand up for discussion as well.
Just want to, two points real quick, if I could. I think consolidating the precincts is going to create congestion in there. I think that's not a good idea in there. And could we do 10:00 AM until 6:00? That's an eight-hour shift. It's in the morning. It cuts, it cuts the morning, and then 6:00 o'clock is a reasonable time. I could see not going until 8:00 o'clock.
That, that sounds doable.
I think we, I think we need to get this thing locked in here. I think eight, an eight-hour polling, polls are open for eight hours is reasonable under the circumstances. Like the chief said, we do it at the Big Y, we can do it here the best we can. And if we, if it looks like we're gonna have issues with poll workers in there, we've got several meetings between now and then, but...
Well, I guess then why wouldn't we just set the date now and then wait to set the hours? Because if the state's going to allow different staffing and reduce the staffing so Anita doesn't have to have that burden, and we can maintain our normal hours safely, I guess, you know, not to kick it down the road, but we could set the date tonight, and then if Anita gets more clarity from the state as to what she can do with staffing, I just don't want, if one person doesn't get to vote because the hours are the way they are, I think we've done a disservice.
I mean, two more weeks would, would give us a better idea along those lines. We'd also have an idea of how many people have, you know, chosen to early vote. Damian sent out the first batch today, and there were 53 ballots went out, so, and the applications are coming in nicely. I can also go back and check that we keep track of the notes that, that our ballot box attendees take for figures of how many people show up at different times, early and afternoon, so.
So if I could just, I'm gonna turn this over to Wayne in a second. I'm just, I'll just bring something up as far as the voting hours go. This has been a perpetual conversation for us. This is an annual conversation about the value of the hours, and in many years it was the cost, and we were trying to save money, save money, save money, because we were, you know, operating on such a shoestring. Obviously, this year is usual. We recognize that, but I, I have always, I have always had this feeling over the years that this is a self-fulfilling prophecy. When you reduce hours, you might reduce voters. If they are accustomed to certain hours that the polls are open every single year, and it's an extended time, and I get it, we go in and the poll workers are generally speaking, sitting there going, you know, it really hasn't been that busy. How do we justify this? You go in and the poll workers are generally speaking, sitting there going, you know, it really hasn't been that busy. How do we justify this? And I guess the justification is if, you know, what is it? Does it take some sort of mass, critical mass that makes it worth it? Well, 10 people came in, so it's worth it. But nine people came in at this hour and it's not again. I'm not sure the benefit of waiting a couple of weeks, if the board felt strongly that extended hours as a policy, as a preference, were already the way to go. We need to, if that's the case, then we need to help, we need to figure it out.
So I think then, Sheila, we can, I can make two motions. One, to set the date for the election on June 22nd, and then another to maintain our regular polling hours as we've done.
You can. They don't have to be separate, but you absolutely can make two motions.
Can I just mention something real quick? Another question my office has been asked, and just because the grocery store analogy has been brought up, I'd like to say that here, just for everyone who's watching. Unlike a grocery store, we cannot legally have senior-only voting hours. This is because we are not legally allowed to check IDs when you come to vote. That, so that being said, that is not an option that we have because there's no way of us verifying who's a senior and who's not if we say these hours at the polls are reserved just for seniors, just like the grocery stores are doing. My office did get that about six or seven times this past two weeks, so I just want to clarify that and make that clear.
Good question.
Can we, Mike, to that point in that effect, can we, when Anita looks at the times that people normally vote, can we provide, I guess, guidelines as to what times are the least trafficked for folks that might have a concern that want to vote in person, or is that?
We are able to say polls are typically empty at this time. We just cannot forbid someone to come and vote.
Absolutely, yeah.
So.
Come full circle.
I guess, I can make a motion then to, a motion to set the town election for June 22nd for a recommendation by the chiefs and the clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
For city, aye.
Still in zay.
Waitman, aye.
Walker, aye.
Dubb stain.
And I'll make a motion to maintain our normal polling hours for this year's town election.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
For city, aye.
Walker, aye.
Waitman, aye.
Dubb stain. So, four to an abstention for both. Thank you very much. Thank you to the chiefs who are still with us. If I could take a moment, as we all know, we have a person, part of our community, who is being challenged by COVID-19 right now. And if Chief Monaco could speak for a moment on that and just give us an update that's possible, obviously, to the public.
Sure, thank you. You know, normally this information would be confidential, but with the blessing of the family, I'm able to share it with you. Last week Detective John Sonji was tested positive for coronavirus and put on quarantine. And initially, he was feeling really good, and then he had some complications this weekend that landed him in ICU at St. Vincent's Hospital. And he's having a really difficult time up there. And part of the treatment is they're actually looking to do a plasma transfusion. So his wife has made an appeal for as many people as possible to go donate blood. They're specifically looking for people with O negative blood tests that have recently had and already recovered from the coronavirus. If you're looking for information on that, it's available on the Red Cross donation website. And they can give you the information on how to donate. But yeah, John's a really tough guy and he's hanging in there and we're really hoping the best for him.
Thank you. Thinking of him and his family. Thanks for keeping us updated. Scott Gilroy, do you have anything? I don't know if you're sticking with us the whole time. Is there anything you wanted to add to any of our conversations in case you needed to leave?
Nope, I'm here for the whole discussion of the town meeting. And if you want me later, I'm here long for that too.
All right, thank you. All right, unless there's anything else, we're going to move on and we will go back up to the top of our agenda, page two, which is, we have two.
Sheila? The chiefs are also here for the town meeting.
Oh, town meeting. Yeah, okay. Circle back. So we've done elections, June 22nd, regular polling hours, town meeting.
Just to do like we did with the elections and give you an up-to-date reminder of where we are. The last meeting, we talked about how to safely hold town meeting in terms of logistics of spacing people in the town meeting location, where to hold the town meeting, and what date to hold the town meeting. On this one, again, does not have to be set prior to June 30th, like the election must be done. However, doing so allows us to avoid a 1/12 budget, which could have some other consequences with it. In terms of locations, again, just to get these out front, so I don't have to interrupt anyone later on, my office has received several suggestions from residents who are watching these videos, as well as department heads, as to locations to hold the town meeting. We've gotten suggestions of Marsh Field, Memorial Field, the Central Tree Middle School Soccer Field, the Town Common, the Community Center, other places there. I will say that Memorial Field did raise the most concerns when that was brought up. Yes, it does already have a built-in speaker system and an elevated platform with the press box. However, there's concerns of parking and handicap access to that field. An outdoor town meeting is allowed. In fact, Southwick recently just did a special town meeting outdoors. And in an open-air venue, the restrictions on the number of people present under the current restrictions are also not in effect if you have an open-air venue. Director Buckley has suggested we look at possibly having him empty the DPW garage and have just the bay doors open in the garage there as a large room that has open air space when the bay doors are open. Or we could stick with our usual indoor venues that we have had in the past. So the discussion that we're looking for are dates, setup, logistics, and how to best keep the members of the public safe. I see Mitch has his hand up as well.
So Mitch, go ahead. And then I'm going to ask the chiefs and Anita and Scott for a poll of date choice and location choice, just straight out from there. And then we'll go on. So Mitch, you go.
Mitch, your volume's a little fired down. I don't know if you can.
How is now?
Good.
Okay, quick question. This might be a non-starter, but is there any way that we can do any of this electronically that would allow for participation in the number of people that we would expect, but also allow people to not have to travel to a venue?
No. Town meetings are the only meetings that were not exempted from the open meeting line of the governor's recent order.
Got it. All right. Thank you for clarifying.
All right, so I'm sure this is a much longer discussion, but I'm going to start with a poll of our professionals, Anita, date, preference, and location preference.
Besides what Mike said about Joe offering the DPW, Seth also mentioned where the fire engine's in there. But that's a fairly good size space. But again, it's parking uptown that's a problem. I don't, the only, if there was a way to, I think it would be better to have it at Glenwood if it was a way to spread people out more, maybe two locations and have it set up. I see the bleachers as very problematic for kind of spurring off areas, but. Again, I just see that and then the logistics could be worked on after that.
And a date, obviously, right now we have nothing legislatively preventing us from doing whatever we want. And the only direction we still have from the governor's office is May 18th for a possible opening up.
I will add to that, that there has been some discussion on conference calls that the area administrator, not area, I guess, the state's administrators, mayors, and other municipal executives have had with the Commonwealth, that state that there is talks of having the town meeting deadline of August 1st and having town meetings at some point either before July or during July, but no longer, so that municipalities do not stay longer than July on a 1/12 budget.
Mitch, your, which you loaded?
Yeah, I can, the question was how can that work if the state doesn't have a budget at that point and there's a lot of moving pieces? And I think this is why this is only still a preliminary discussion about those things there. The argument on the back is that most municipal budgets are passed prior to the state budget even getting to the senate at that point. So there's still two steps passed there that they just go off preliminary numbers. And I think that's pretty much what they're taking it off there. Again, nothing official has been decided on that, but we have been given a heads-up to start planning for that, should that go into effect. Sheila, Jeff also has his hand up as well.
Jeff, are you okay with letting the chiefs give their vote on date and location?
Yes, ma'am.
Chiefs? Seth?
I'll go June 27th. Any outdoor venue is fine.
That was clear. Thank you.
We've also spoken that if it is an outdoor venue, we'd ask the brigade for the tent in the event of inclement weather.
Nick?
That sounds good with me. 27th outside. We're prepared with manpower whenever you decide to help out.
So I'm hearing from the two of you that an indoor venue gives you pause. Is that fair?
I think traditionally in Glenwood, on a Saturday evening, it's very hot and just the circulation of the air in the building could probably be problematic. So anything outside would be much more suitable.
I'd point to that if you did vote, 27th and outside, in case of like really, really inclement weather, moderator has the ability to post to another, you know, a few days, another week later, so.
Okay.
That is already in the legislation that was passed prior to the pandemic, was the inclement weather.
Scott?
I agree. I like the 27th and outdoors. And the one addition I was going to add is have a rain date. Because unfortunately, the way that our luck is going, it may not be a very nice day that day anyways.
That's correct. Jeff?
Echoing those sentiments about Memorial Field and the fire brigade's tents, I think that's your answer. As a town in part of this discussion, if you're looking at late June and we still don't know what the schools are going to do to come back early, et cetera, who are we as a town to put any threat into that building? If you're going to put 300 people into the school, if every one person and 300 are COVID-positive in there, it's just, who are we to impose that upon a school and the children who could be going back later? So I think we need to lock in the date, like we said, and I think seriously committing to doing that outdoor venue. We have to check with the fire brigade to see if they're okay to set up those tents, but they do have the equipment in there to host such a thing.
Some things I will, go ahead.
Parking will be the issue.
Yeah. One of the things that I will say is parking was one of the discussions that we had when this did all come up. That's one of the reasons why Joe brought up emptying the bay at the DPW building and moving the equipment down up back behind the brush pile. And that way we can open up the lot there for parking like we do sometimes when we know we have big tournaments at Memorial Field. Plus, it counts towards the outdoor restrictions because we have those bays all up. Similar thing with the fire station, it's just there's more of a greater concern at that point in time with parking. The outdoor venues that have been suggested are Memorial Field, the common in front, the common by the flag that's down between the library and the congregational church, putting the brigade tent there. In both cases of those, the concern is if there is inclement weather, which again, the statute for that one isn't so much have a rain date as it is the moderator is allowed to postpone the town meeting to a date certain. So if we do postpone, we have to post that it is postponed to this date in time. So that's what we do there. Oh, sorry. But I will say the concern there is if it is wet, then now you have a soggy ground that you're making people walk on to get to the tent.
Yep. Thanks, chiefs. So now the outdoor venue sounds great, and we have the recommendation from the chiefs. I guess my only question is, as a board, if we set this, are we setting it too early just because there are so many unknowns with the budget at this point? And I think it's a little unreasonable to even think that we're going to have clarity by town meeting about those unknowns. I just think that maybe the later the better, or at least we should wait to see kind of what direction we're being provided. I mean, the majority of our budget right now is still kind of a total unknown factor at this point.
Wayne has his hand up too, Sheila.
Wayne?
Well, I could just echo with what Mike just said. I don't know how, I understand the desire to set a town meeting, but I don't know how we could truthfully do that if we don't have a firm budget from the school district. We don't know what the state's numbers are going to be. So how can we truthfully sit down in a meeting and vote on a budget if we don't have all this information?
Leah, if you don't mind, I have, I'm trying to, I've been hearing this. I'm just thinking back and Wayne, you've been here a while too. We never have final state numbers. We tend to go with the most conservative ones we have at the moment. We do have at the moment a voted school budget. We might not like it, but we have it. And the only thing we are asked to do relative to school is our piece. We have no say over what they may or may not get on 70 and 71. I guess when I look forward at this, what I look forward at is an amendment to an approved budget based on a true disaster happening that we won't necessarily know about until the legislature takes up a budget. And that might not be until November, for all we know, with the pace that they're moving at right now. And I guess I don't see the value in us, the town, sitting around under a 1/12 when we have the pieces we usually have.
Well, that's not really true either, though. I think the issue is that the school is reworking their budget and they've been receiving guidance on how to deal with that. I mean, realistically though, Sheila, if we pass the budget, I mean, there is a large chance that 70 gets cut. And then what happens from there? I mean, there's just so many holes in what we don't know as to how this is going to be treated moving forward, that it seems almost irresponsible to pass something knowing that it's going to drastically change later on.
So if it's okay, and I know Leah wants to talk to you, I want to address that. I have a, I see that differently. To me, the irresponsibility comes in not passing the budget.
No, I know you want to run on it, Sheila, but we just don't know where education funding is right now.
But hear me out. The district asks us for a portion of their budget, right? We typically break it out in four pieces. It's basically part of what they think they're getting from the state. They are not allowed to ask us for more than that after the budget is passed. And I mean passed not just by us, right, but passed by the number of town needs to pass by. If something dramatic and drastic happens over the summer that the school district no longer has or it needs from the state to come back under a special situation and ask the town for more money is very different than the town sitting around waiting for a budget that might come back higher. Again, a budget ask of the town, not their full budget, just our piece of it. That's our, that can, in some ways, that in our role, that can be our only concern. And again, I understand other people's take on it. I understand how hard it is to be this uncertain this late in the game. So I do get that, but I, yeah, I just, I see a different path moving forward. But that said, I'm sorry, Leah?
No, I was just going to say, if they bring up the discussion about the concern of going into a 1/12 if we don't know the, all the pieces. But also, I had asked FinCom for their take on it. We didn't get an answer. I had asked it at the end of the meeting on Thursday night. I don't know, Mike, if you had any follow-up. I think their meeting ended shortly after ours did. And I said, I mean, I knowingly knew that it wasn't a conversation piece probably for that night, but I didn't know if you had any more insight from them on their kind of pros or cons from their perspective of the town going into a 1/12 if there's so many, a large portion of the budget not known, given the school, on the school side of the money going out as well as the revenue side from the state.
The, we, not an official discussion about 1/12 or not. The finance committee is meeting on Thursday, though. And the budget is on their agenda and have no doubt it will come up then. I know that like we've said before, the main concern is that the school budget does make up 60% of our budget. And just like our revenues are uncertain, theirs are uncertain as well. Uh, and we've been notified they are redoing their budget. Uh, the only guidance that I've received is from the Commonwealth, um, with a conference call that we had on Friday. And then we have another one scheduled tomorrow as well with the, uh, Division of Local Services, the Department of Revenue and the Governor's Office. The advice that we're getting now is to try to hold as, um, as much as possible, try to hold the town meetings in late June. Uh, and if not in early July, as soon as can be done. Because they are really pushing for municipalities to avoid a 112th budget if as much possible. And I think that's one of the reasons why too, they're throwing around the idea of putting in that deadline of August 1st. But that's just what we received from the Commonwealth so far. You heard from Dan and Becky at the last meeting that they also believe financially it's in the town's best interest to avoid a 112th if we can. In terms of my office and just general town administration, we'll be ready for both. Uh, and we have the warrants, as you can see in your packets that you have, um, at some meetings now. We're ready for the warrant articles as they are, and we're working on the budget continuously too, as if we are having a town meeting um, at any point. And we'll be having a contingency plan should we go into a 112th either way. Um, but in terms of the guidance we've received, that's what we've gone to.
So let's back into this a little bit. If I, if we set the date aside for a second and it still sounds like the comfort level within the range is still to go outside, I, I think the only venue, Mike, I didn't hear was the Glenwood lower parking lots.
I don't think anyone thought of it, to be honest with you.
So ironically, they're always completely empty, even during a big town meeting. Because people don't think to go down there. They park up in the two upper lots. They park along the roadways, which not ideal, but they do. And the, I'm thinking about this, three consecutive good sized parking lots that are marked out, um, are available. And they're flat and they are handicapped accessible and they are paved. Just a thought.
In either case, and Scott, you can, uh, get on this too, if you, if I'm saying anything wrong. We'd have to pay, spread the chairs for everyone who's in attendance there six feet apart, um, from each other just to follow social distancing guidelines at that point, because then again, we are having, the town is the one who's having the people there. So just to avoid any liability issues there. Um, and then Seth, we'd have to just talk about to see if the mask regulation is also in effect there and how we would go around that. And I see Jeff's hand is up as well.
Yeah, we can, we can take care of that, Mike.
Yep. And we've also, Seth and I have also talked about getting a plexiglass shield for those that are checking people into the meeting as well. Like you see at the post office or different, uh, grocery stores or different convenience stores around too, to try to, um, protect our people who are checking them in.
The DPW building would have a restroom. That's something you have to take into consideration if you're going to throw cans out there. You're going to have to order parties, kind of have people there for three hours.
We hope not three hours, but.
Well, you know.
Can I get back to Chief Knight? Seth, can you just clarify, were you saying we'll take care of it as in the town would provide masks? Or that you would take care of the requirement of masks?
No, the town would have masks available for anyone that did not already have one. By that point, most people were already had their own covering at, at that point.
So can we, it, it sounds like we're kind of working through this a little bit. And we still have, correct me if I'm wrong, but we still have time, even if we wanted to set the meeting, um, on the 27th, there's still time we can do that. Is it then appropriate to, if everyone's in agreement that's safe and we want to do the outdoor venue, to come back in two weeks with a fully fleshed out plan, location, all that stuff? And then we can just vote and get it on the books? Or how does everyone feel about that?
I don't know. The deadline, oh, go ahead.
Nope.
I was just, the deadline to post the meeting is two weeks in advance.
So we have plenty of time if we want to go on the 27th.
And I would like honestly to have a little bit more input from FinCom since we asked specifically for that piece, but not till the end of our joint meeting on Friday. Um, I know that we ultimately are the ones that set town meeting date and set the warrant. But I would like on times like this, I would really prefer to have some input, maybe even conversation with them about it. I think we're, we're posted also for Thursday, Mike, or we will be?
Yes.
Yeah. I think if we're, to Leah's point, if we're going to schedule this earlier than what the state's allowing and we're going to jeopardize, jeopardize health and safety, we want to make sure we have as much information as we can. We know what we're doing. So, um, maybe that two week period to where we can come out, maybe Mike, you can present a fully fleshed out kind of, this is where it's going to be. This is what the logistics are. And then we can just move forward from there.
Good with me.
Pretty good. Anita, are you good with that?
That worked.
That worked. Great. All right. Progress. Slow but steady.
Can we dismiss our chief? So we don't with a?
I think, did I forget anything again? I think we might, we might be good.
Town clerk?
All right. Oh, Anita.
I'm going to mute.
Okay. One of these days, Anita, we'd like to see you, miss seeing you. Uh, I'm going to circle back up, try again to, um, what is technically page three, the top of page three on the agenda. And that is, uh, we have two situations relative to upcoming typical spring, summer events. That is the 4th of July committee that came to us two weeks ago, and then Memorial Day Committee, uh, that submitted a memorandum that was in your Google Drive, Mike.
So the 4th of July committee did choose to cancel its event, uh, for July 4th. The posting that they did say, which you have a copy of in your folders as well, said that they are looking at a date to reschedule the events. However, at this time, it will not continue on July 4th, kind of like what we got the sense of at the last meeting. The other thing that we got was from the Memorial Day Committee. The Memorial Day Committee has decided to cancel the Memorial Day Parade and is asking for the board's vote of support on that decision, uh, to endorse their decision to cancel that parade. They are looking at doing a Veterans Day Parade in its place in the fall, in November, when hopefully the restrictions are lifted and doing something small, uh, such as a small wreath laying that can be filmed and then put on the TV on Memorial Day as well at our town memorials. That said, the American Legion, um, of whom all our Memorial Day Committee members are part of, uh, said that they will continue to put the flags on all of the poles in downtown as well as on all of the graves of veterans in all of our cemeteries as they usually do as well. So they're just looking to not host the usual parade that they normally host and, uh, schedule one for Veterans Day in November.
Jeff?
I would make the motion to support the, uh, recommendation of the Memorial Day Committee. With the decision to postpone the Memorial Day ceremonies.
I'd second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Resideye.
Waitman eye.
Walker eye.
Dylan's eye.
Devi unanimous. Thank you. So, um, just to quickly circle back to 4th of July, I, I don't think they're necessarily here. Oh no, Tina's here tonight to talk a little bit. Um, I think maybe we had a lot of people who were a little bit taken aback when they canceled right, kind of right after our meeting two weeks ago. And I, I felt, um, I felt really badly that they had somehow walked away from our meeting with an idea that they needed to post something so quickly. I know, you know, a lot of people obviously look forward to Rutland events. They are a huge community builder. Um, and I think Tina, uh, and I'm, I'm just running down names. There's probably people here with you. I think what we are looking to do is find out from you how we can support you in putting together some alternative virtual plans, a little bit like Memorial Day did, to give people something that will continue to be a community builder, allow them to do it safely from home. Um, I know we had thrown out some sort of random ideas a couple of weeks ago. Um, I also know it's obviously hard for all of us to meet, certainly in the way the 4th of July committee used to meet. Um, so, so kind of that's why we wanted to come back to see if we could help you through whatever situation you think you, whatever direction you want to head with this.
Right. Um, I think, you know, what goes on behind the scenes for the 4th of July, there's a lot of, um, contracts to do and, and, um, scheduling of bands. Uh, there's just so much stuff. And we had reached the point where we need to start making decisions. So I think after we got off the meeting last week, we did email, um, the 4th of July committee and let them know what the feedback was. And with that, we decided to announce that it, we would be, we wouldn't be holding the 4th of July events on the 4th of July, but that we did let them know we were looking for a, a date to reschedule. Um, and I, we still, uh, you know, can discuss the virtual 4th of July, uh, uh, different events. We do, we are planning on having a Zoom meeting on the 13th. That's our, our typical night to meet. And any questions or, um, any discussion you want me to have about the virtual events, we can definitely do and, and see what kind of feedback we get from, from the committee.
That would be great. Um, Mitch?
Uh, nope, that was, um, nevermind. Answered my question already.
Okay. Tina, you might have some guests on May 13th.
Okay.
Tina, uh, one of the things I just wanted to throw out there too, because you are a town committee, if you want to use the town's Zoom account, you're welcome to the, uh, the free Zoom accounts. You're limited to 40 minutes and to a certain number of people there. Um, so if you, that's something you'd like us to do, my office is happy to help you out with that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tina, if people want to submit suggestions to you and they're watching tonight and they're not typically necessarily following you on Facebook, where I think any of the Facebook users are sort of clear on how to get a message to you, what would you guys recommend as far as an email address or?
There is an email address on our website. Um, and if you just go to Rutland 4th of July, it usually pops right up. Um, so there, you can read, you can reach us through there, uh, on the email. You can reach us through Facebook. And any suggestions are welcome. I mean, if people have ideas or, I mean, I know everybody's disappointed. The 4th is a huge, huge, huge event in Rutland. Um, I think, uh, you know, we don't want to see, we don't want to see people upset and we don't want to see people disappointed. So, um, we will bring up the virtual events discussion and see what we can do as far as, uh, a future date.
That's great. Thank you.
Sheila, Jeff has his.
I do know one of the dates people were throwing out was fall. Um, and I, I, with all the information you're getting, I know the, the fire chief is not on here anymore, but, um, does that even seem safe?
Mike?
From the, Scott, you can feel free to jump on this too. The information that we're getting is it is currently safe to schedule things for the fall.
Okay.
The talk of the second wave that's being predicted, um, by Dr. Fauci and others working at the federal government is projected to come sometime during the winter time currently. Uh, but we are being told so long as people follow smart decisions, scheduling things for the fall right now is considered okay.
Okay.
That being said, though, real quick, um, because I know that your largest fundraiser was the, the yard sale. And if you're going to start planning for something for the fall, how can we best, or maybe this is a conversation you could take back to, um, your committee, how the board can really promote and help you with the additional fundraising that's now going to be needed because of the cancellation of that event as well. And maybe we can, we can look for alternatives to kind of, you know, get you the funds you would need to do something.
Um, I know that a couple of, like, we discussed putting out the bulk, um, mailing that's going to, you know, raise, um, funds from local town residents and actually adding a sticker to it that explains if, um, that the, the donations will go to this year's events that we're trying to schedule at a different date. And if that, for whatever reason, doesn't happen, that their donations will go to next year's 4th of July. So at least people know where their, their donations are going. Um, we've also talked about having, hopefully, trying to have, um, a townwide yard sale in the fall, just later. Um, I know that's one thing that's on the table. It's, it's funny, like, I, I know Rutland residents and it, and, and we get a lot of, I, I don't want to just say Rutland, but we get a lot from Holden and, um, the surrounding towns. But we get a lot of people who aren't Rutland residents, especially at the fireworks. And, um, I don't know, like Facebook just seems to be the way to, to get things through. And, um, I know when Mike was making all the COVID announcements, those announcements would go through Facebook rapid fire, you know, and everybody would see them. So at one point, um, I was even thinking if he got on and explained the situation with the 4th, um,
Happy to do anything.
If we get right down to, you know, we need, we need help and we need to get a message out, that might be one way that would help us.
No.
And, and quickly.
Was that?
You know, he has the suit.
Right, he's got the suit. So.
Jeff, then Mike?
Yes, thank you. Uh, two, two things. Uh, Tina, somebody mentioned the word disappointment. Just want to make it clear that the board fully supports the 4th of July committee decision that, that you folks had to make. It was a very important and very tough decision and we fully support that. So the disappointment is on the pandemic itself, not in any way, uh, a reflection on the 4th of July committee, which has done an exemplary job. Secondly, uh, speaking on behalf of a float maker or a family float maker, um, you need a solid two months or up to three months to start building things. So there's more, you have the 4th of July committee, but you also have participants in many different ways who, uh, who are going to need a solid eight weeks after the fog lifts, after the pandemic lifts in there. So.
Right.
So it may be good to come out of the shadows at the end of July or early August. You gotta give a couple of months, uh, realistic to allow families to get in and start building.
Right.
Jeff, any insight, Jeff, to, to give the people of Rutland something to look forward to? Are you willing to share any of your, uh, potential themes for this year's float?
Well, it's, it's the same, you know, no, no.
I honestly don't understand what Jeff is complaining about. He should be building his float now. If anything, he has way more time. I expect big, big things.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be way grander, Jeff, in the fall.
Yeah.
Oktoberfest.
It was, it was a little hard to hear some of the feedback that came off of, of, um, the, uh, off of Facebook. But I think we also probably announced right at a time where they're hearing their graduations were canceled, their proms are canceled, the school had been canceled. So I kind of think we were maybe the last straw on people. It was like, now this is gone.
You had to make that decision, Tina. I mean, you had to do it.
We did, we did. And, um, I, I was really hoping they would focus on the, um, the postponement, but, but it just seems like all they hear was, heard was canceled. So.
Well, I, I think a lot of them heard postponement with no date certain, which just made them think, oh my God, it's, it's going to be next year.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, that wasn't the intention. So, uh, hopefully once, once we meet with the 4th of July committee, we can come up with something that, um, you know, alleviates some of that, that disappointment.
Thank you so much for everything you do.
Welcome.
Please let the committee know that we appreciate what you've done.
Okay, we will keep you guys posted and I can send you a Zoom link, um, so that you know, uh, if you want to join the, join the meeting that night.
Thank you.
When is it? What's the date?
Um, we're sending out an, the announcement for the May 13th. It's, uh, Wednesday night at seven.
Thank you.
I just, I, I'm looking at the Rutland 4th of July, uh, website. And for anyone interested that's watching, the email address is Rutland, the number four T H of July Committee at gmail.com. So it's like, it comes up right away if you Google it. Just so everybody knows there also.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything, Tina.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on, it is Mike's turn. Town administrator update?
Uh, just as we normally do during the pandemic, I'm going to start with an update of, of the town's response to the pandemic. Uh, we did start to bring back our staff members at town hall. Uh, we are working with Director Buckley and Chief Knight to set up different, uh, safety mechanisms. That way when we do open to the public again, uh, we do have the different precautions already in place. This involves putting up a plexiglass screen at the counters in both the town clerk's office and at the treasure collector's office and installing a half door. And installing a half door at the Inspection Services Department. That way it limits people who have direct access to things like desks and stuff like that of our employees. Uh, we have Service Master coming in to do a full deep clean of all of our buildings. Uh, they'll be taking a tour of our buildings tomorrow so they could draft a full scope. Uh, and then we'll be going on from there. Hopefully by the end of next week, the deep clean will be done. Uh, Chief Knight is the one who is coordinating that there. And I will say that the costs of all of this is stuff that do does fall under the the COVID expenditures that are listed. That are either FEMA or MEMA reimbursable or get amortized over the next three years in the tax rate. So that is how the cost for those can be allocated if that means we have to go over budget there, but I feel like protecting our. Uh, employees with those measures is an important decision there. Plus, in the warmer months, um, we can start to have more. Staff available now that we're opening windows or our staff are working outside. Uh, our recreation and safe place departments are still planning for next year. Right now, neither are able to do any of their summer programming. Uh, however, that doesn't mean they can't plan for it that way. If we are allowed to have something in place, they're ready to go. I do want to put a note out to the residents that we are required for certain. Just regulations to open the pool. In terms of taking the cover off and cleaning the water, that way it doesn't become a mosquito breeding location. However, until the restrictions are lifted, we aren't allowed to open the pool for public use or for swimming use. Uh, Director Buckley and Director Frohak from the recreational department are looking to see how we handle that, whether we drain the pool, so it's a lower water, but it's clean water or something like that. Making sure everything's followed there as well. Right now, our goal is to be able to be open to the public by July 1st. If we can move that date up to a earlier date, we'll, we will. It just depends on how we evaluate the situations that come at the time. The idea now is to get staff back during the month of May so that we can start. Planning for what we need when we open early during the month of June, implement all that stuff that we need, like those screens. The new doors, uh, just different systems like that. That way, when we do open, probably in July. We have everything set, ready to go. But if we, again, if we can open earlier, the goal is to be able to open as early as we can once it is safe to do so. Uh, I, like I've said before, I can't thank our health agent, Rich Stevens enough, and everyone over in the Board of Health, Lynn Miller. Chief Knight and everyone just, it's been a, as hard as this is, it's also been easy because of the team that we have and I can't thank them enough for that. Scott, I don't know if you want to add anything to the town's response to the pandemic or not?
Um, I I just got to agree with you, what you said, that the whole team has been unbelievable. I know Rich and Lynn and Seth have been going, you know, 30 hours a day, nonstop, just making sure, you know, they're on top of this and, you know. The good thing is, it, at least in this area, it seems like it's slowing for us, which is good. Um, and, you know, everyone in the town just to realize, uh, we're doing well, we're getting through this and. We want to err on the the side of, uh, you know, protection, so that's why all this is happening and it, it's just something we have to do and we'll come out better on the end. And I just wanted, what you mentioned about in the fall, everything we're seeing is kind of talking, you know, late November is what Dr. Fauci and all the experts are saying. If there is to be a second uh, go around, they're seeing it late November, right as the start of the whole cold flu season kicks in. So, um, you know, anything earlier in the in the fall might be, uh, okay. Yeah, I mean, this is obviously uncharted territory, but it's, you know, our, our best look and our best bet would be earlier rather than later.
Thanks.
Um, and then. As you, as the public has seen, the Department of Public Health is now releasing numbers for all municipalities at this time, so those go out every Wednesday. On behalf of us at the town, I do want to congratulate our 20 residents who have fully recovered. And those that are still dealing with the virus, you still have our full support behind you, who in best wishes, like we said before, especially to Detective Sanji, as we said earlier.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I really appreciate how much the town has really made an effort to work at. Doing social distancing as hard as it is and as much as you almost disagree with it at times, um, to see cases like Detective Sanji's come up really, really puts things.
Uh, the last thing I'll say about the town's COVID response is. As everyone may be aware, and we did put this on the town's uh, social media last week, Governor Baker did sign an executive order requiring everyone who cannot. Be social distant outside to wear some type of face covering. It does not have to be a surgical mask, but it has to be something that at least covers your mouth and your nose. Uh, and if you can be six feet apart from someone, you do not have to have that on at that time. A lot of the questions we're getting is if I go out for a walk by myself, do I have to have a mask on? The answer is so long as you're six feet away from someone, no, you don't. Uh, however, if you are in a place where you are closer than six feet from someone else, uh, then you do have to have a mask and the. Executive order leaves it up to the local municipality to enforce and the offense is a $300 fine. So that is put in, that has been put in place by um, the Commonwealth, not by the town, but it is a regulation that come Wednesday. Will go into effect, so we want to make sure people know that. Jeff, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you. Um, on that note, Mike, I took this weekend, I took, go right around the prison camp gates and the state parks. And it is packed, those parking lots are packed. It's probably 30 or 50 cars that I saw between Berry. Berry line, the OKM spot right at the line, and then inside Whitehall, et cetera. Not all the gates, a couple of gates, I saw a couple of gates unlocked, but majority of the gates are locked, which is causing the uh. The lock pile in there. We were told by DCR that the reason for the lock gates was because of mud season. I think mud season's over. Could we perhaps reach out to DCR and ask them uh, for a time when they expect to open the gates in there? I think that would be advantageous to the congestion that we're seeing. Take a ride down there, you'll, you'll see there's a lot of traffic. They're utilizing not just the rail trail, but the interior of Whitehall Road in there, horses, et cetera, so. I think it's relevant. Yeah, could, could somebody look into that?
Sure, absolutely, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I just had a question about the, what you just said about the the new policy going into effect. Can we post a language of that maybe on the websites if people are aware? My other question to you is since it's up to municipalities to enforce, I mean, what are we looking at in terms of enforcement? Are we looking at warnings, tickets? It's just, I mean, we're approaching, I think we're at something like between 17 and 20% unemployment right now. I hate for somebody that. For whatever reason gets fined $300 because they're not wearing a mask appropriately.
Yeah, we're getting guidance on that tomorrow from the Commonwealth. How we should be implementing that. You're welcome. I will say too, like I said earlier, it doesn't have to be a mask, it can be a handkerchief, it can be something else, so long as your mouth and your nose are covered. Any other questions on our COVID responses or any of that before I go forward?
I just wanted to say thank you to you, Mike, and Scott Board of Health, Rich, everybody, I mean, Fire Police, everyone's been great. So it gives me a lot of confidence having you guys in charge of it because I feel like you've been really on top of it and communicating really well, so I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on, you'll notice on the agenda, I put general updates with nothing under it. That's because there was a lot of moving parts that were happening last week. That I at least wanted to give the board a heads up on. Because we got things as early as or as late as this afternoon. These aren't things that need action by the board, but there's just some information I'd like to get out there to start you all thinking so that when it does come time for the board to take action, you have an idea. But before we get to those things, I just wanted to do a quick shout out. Thank you to Rutland Veterinary Clinic. Kanan Cooney had a run in with a porcupine earlier today, uh, but he is fine. He is doing very well. Thank you to their staff for helping him out there. Tried to make friends with him and it ended up interesting. But I'd also want to say thank you to all the donors who have been helping out our public safety departments in particular. I put a thing out on Facebook and we sent out an email blast with just a thank you letter that I sent to the town. But it really has been outstanding, the amount of support that this community has shown during these troubling times that we have. The donor who we talked about at the last meeting who requested that his donation be put solely towards bonus payments. To all of our public safety personnel, uh, the amount of people who have been purchasing meals for our, excuse me, hot meals or just anything for our first responders. And our dispatch fire and police departments lately has been through the roof. Bria Coffee, who's our local coffee producer in town, um, dropped off 10 pounds of coffee. It just, it's been very. Heartwarming and humbling to see just how much this community cares for itself and I just had to say thank you again. Because it really is astonishing. These signs, I keep getting calls from people asking when their sign is coming up because we can't order enough to keep up with the orders that are coming in. I feel like every day I'm texting Fran Steiner being like, I need 10 more, I need 10 more. We've already put out 130 of these and there's more coming in every day. So just thank you to everyone for your support of everyone in our community. As I said at the end of the Finance Committee meeting on Thursday, we have formally been approached by the Select Board of the Town of OKM. To begin negotiations for a regional intermunicipal agreement for the Town of Rutland to take over ambulance services for the Town of OKM. If you remember, uh, we signed a temporary intermunicipal agreement with OKM last year to do a regional chief situation. They have decided to hire their own chief, who is an internal hire from their department, so Seth will no longer be acting chief at OKM come June 30. However, they have asked us to fully take over their ambulance services. So as we go into negotiations there, there'll probably be an executive session on the next agenda. To talk about those items there, but just so you are aware, that is some discussions that we have preliminary entered into. Um, the last thing that I'd like to bring up here. Uh, and I'm going to share my screen in a little bit, is that all of the Wachusett area town administrators and select boards were contacted recently. By the class officers. Of the class of 2020 from Wachusett Regional High School about doing a parade for our graduating seniors. Uh, the scene, the class officers have kind of put this together by themselves and then went to Assistant Town Administrator and Holden Stephanie King. To help with the logistics of it, who has also reached out to the Wachusett Town Administrators to talk about the logistics for this. Um, the Holden Town Police Chief has also reached out to all the regional chiefs, uh, and they all agree with the system as well. Chief Monaco also supports it very much. Um, what I would like to. Share with you all, so I will share my screen for just a quick second, is just the preliminary idea for this caravan parade. The students will be. Meeting at Wachusett Regional High School and then stopping at the Paxton Center School, CTMS, Thomas Prince, Choxit, and then ending at Mountain View. Uh, the parade route is here in front of you and we are currently working out the logistics for that, but just so you are aware, because this is getting some social media attention. That this is in the works for something that we will be looking at. Scheduled for Saturday, June 6. And happy to answer any questions for any or comments on any of the stuff that I said since the COVID update.
Anybody have questions for Mike? Sorry, Mike, that chat absolutely stopped all of us into silence, apparently. I I'm not going to lie, I definitely have questions about the kids sharing cars. They don't all drive, they don't all have access to a car. We have 500 graduating seniors. I would, I would not expect unfortunately that they would all be able to necessarily tend, but that's a lot of cars driving around. So it'll be interesting to hear from the chief as far as. Management of that, management of um, the students as they congregate in the starting point and at the end point, some safety concerns, just about that many. You know, younger drivers and things like that, but it sounds like a wonderful idea, certainly hoping Rutland can. Put on its, you know, its best foot forward and show some love to them as they come through Rutland, depending on that final parade.
Yeah, the, this, uh, Wachusett Regional High School is coordinating registration of students for the parade. Uh, and will be doing all of the logistics for the startup. When you get there, based on the registrations they have there. Uh, the Assistant Principal, who is a Rutland resident. Is the primary person who's helping to coordinate this with the class officers of the class of 2020.
Mike, do you have any sense of how they're handling non-Wachusett students?
I don't. That's an excellent question that I'm happy to ask. I will also add for it that Holden has also reached out to their town council to see. Anything the towns need to do just to protect ourselves in terms of a release of liability, if that's needed, how we should direct our routes. Uh, the idea right now is to have one cruiser per every member town, follow them along the whole route. So these are all things that we are being uh, ironed out, that we will have a definite plan at the board's next meeting. But again, since that is in the play, in talks and it's getting some talk on social media, we, I wanted to make sure you all knew that that is something that Stephanie and I have been talking about for a little bit. And Jeff, I see your hand is up as well.
I'm just gonna say, thinking of myself as a high school senior, what could possibly go wrong? Bad idea, bad idea. Here we go, but, okay.
I can say that. Stephanie has asked that they do this in the morning. For similar concerns that have been raised regarding that.
Remember we did that with the motorcycles, uh, in the PD? Oh, it was for, it was for Tarantino and it was a big loop, Officer Tarantino, and that came to town and it takes quite a bit of logistics with officers. Blocking dangerous intersections for a lot of people coming, so. I'm a no.
All right, thank you, Mike. Is that, is there anything else?
That, that's it on my updates.
Good on you. Uh, all right, we are moving on, department updates. We don't have any official tonight and our chiefs have left for their other meeting. Under old business, sort of finally, we have under 064, the marijuana RFI's and the presentation of the working group recommendation and the select board. This is a very data and document heavy piece of business that we've got tonight. And Mike, with the majority of the work group now gone, you're going to be pretty much taking this on by yourself, right?
Yes. With that said, I do want to just reiterate that the recommendations that the group put forward are not my personal recommendations, but ones that were decided by the whole group. You'll see in your folders on your Google Drives. There's every document that was related to this RFI process is there. These are all public documents now. I can say that the names of who submitted a document. Um, and the registry of those that you can find on your general procurement procedure documents folder on there. Those have all been public documents since January 16. However, the other documents that are there, such as the actual submissions by the three groups that submitted proposals, the redacted submissions. So that the public can see that the redacted proposals were there, that they were actually used. Those have been included in your packets as well. The grading rubrics that were, um, both the sample one and the actual graded ones for each company are included in your documents. Disclosures um, that were made are included in there. Correspondence between applicants and the, and my office serving as the liaison between the working group and the applicants. I'm trying to think what else is, and then the. The actual documents that were released. I can say that the way that the process worked, and you can see this all in your recommendations PDF. It just outlines um, how we got to where we are in terms of the votes by the Commonwealth at ballot. Initiatives to allow for cannabis sales, both medical and adult use. In the Commonwealth, the vote at the town meeting to approve them. And the procedure set out by the board is all outlined in your documents so that you have all that information there in front of you, just because it has been so long. I want to make sure everyone was familiarized with the process. Uh, I would like to say if you go on that document on December 17. Myself, Chief Monaco, Chief Knight, Health Agent Stevens, Town Planner George, Director Buckley, and the Town Accountant Dan Haynes. Were all selected for the advisory group. This is after the board authorized me to choose people to be on the advisory group. After that group was set, um, Dan Haynes, due to his very part-time employment with the town, thought that with everything he was doing as his day job as the business manager, uh, excuse me, business administrator. For Tri-County Regional Vocational Technical High School, uh, that he would not have adequate time to dedicate to this process, so he asked to be removed. And then following when the submissions were submitted, um, seeing that none of the proposers proposed locations on roads that are owned by the town and. Were out and all of them were in roads that were outside of the town's jurisdiction, Director Buckley asked to be removed from the process as well to dedicate more time to the sewer IMA. Negotiations that are ongoing between the DCR and the town, so both of those were approved. So both of those were approved. So in the end, we had the remaining six evaluators there. We certified them as outlined there. The proposals were advertised in the central register, in the newspaper, on the town's website, in the town hall, and on our town's social media. All of this was in accordance with the procedure outlined for an RFP under 30B, because that was the model that we were following for the rest of the RFI review. So we wanted to make sure that the advertisements followed that procedure as well. In terms of the review, Laura Paradise, who is my executive assistant, and Colin Smith, who took over after Laura left on temporary maternity leave, and Director Moriarty from the dispatch center redacted all of the submissions that you can see, both the submissions and the redacted version, as I said, in your folders. And then we conducted, they were distributed to the members of the working group, and we each conducted our own review independently of each other. This was so that whatever independent review was done, was done based off of that particular person's own thought process and not influenced by someone else who may be sitting at the same table or having a discussion as the review was done. That way, the initial review was done solely based on that applicant before you at that time and not someone else's opinion, who may have a different opinion than yours at the moment. When that was completed, the working group came together and compared their grading, but no grades were changed at that time. And that was made clear because, again, the review should be that person's honest review of that application. At that point in time, we had two of the applicants, Caregiver Patient Connection and Red Cardinal, reach out to the working group and ask if they could do a presentation on the public parts of their proposal. I didn't want to do that unless we had consent from all three parties. So Laura reached out and asked if the parties would be interested, and if so, as to what date and what time. That email from Laura is also included in your packet under the correspondence folder. We set up those presentations. All three groups did their presentations in the manners outlined in your document. And the one that we had the paper copy of, because they submitted a letter rather than doing just an oral presentation, that letter is also included in your packet for this evening. And then the public portions of the RFI were then graded by the working group individually of each other, and then came back in again, just as we had for the private section of it. And then we compiled those there. Because the presentations were not part of the original RFI document, the working group said very clearly that those presentations would not be used unless we had to break a tie. And in fact, we did not have to break a tie in the end. So those were actually not used. They were more just for information gathering than anything. And again, they were used solely to break a tie if we had to, and we did not have to. So the three licenses that were applied for was we had an application for a cultivation license, an application for a product manufacturer license, and then three applications for an adult-use sales license. Again, the working group of six conducted their review and compiled the scores through the objective rubric that was approved as part of the RFI process. The group is recommending that a cultivation license be issued and awarded to mass home growers, that the adult-use retail sales license be awarded to Red Cardinal, and that the town wait to award the marijuana product manufacturer's license as a majority of the working group had concerns about financing for the applicant for that one as well. But we are, we, as in the other five people in the group as well, are recommending that those two licenses be approved by the board. If you go to the next page, you'll see on the next steps of the document, the select board can now either vote to accept the recommendation and authorize me to enter into host community agreement negotiations with those who we are suggesting be awarded. Go against any of the recommendations that the working groups have and go with someone else instead. That is the board's full right to do at any time, because this authority does not lie with the working group, it relies with the board at that point. Or remand things back to the working group to re-review based on feedback that the board has, in which case these documents still remain public documents that can be requested at any time. And that's what number two is, is that all of these remain public documents. And that under the procurement laws of the Commonwealth, we actually have to keep all of these things that you have in your folder, we have to keep hard copies of at least one of each for the next seven years in the town's files. And if the process, all of the parties who are awarded or allowed to go on to the next step, which is a host community agreement negotiation with myself, they are still required to go through the regular planning board process of a special permit, and so on from there. I will say too, that entering into the host community process doesn't mean this is a do-all, end-all. If we get to the point where we're in a negotiation for a host community agreement and the town just cannot come to an agreement with that person, then the select board can reject it altogether and go to either someone else who submitted in this process, or reopen the process completely again. So this isn't the be-all, end-all here, but this is the recommendations from the six members of that working group. And again, the rubrics are all of there that have the objective grading that's listed there. The proposals are all there, those proposals are now fully public, except certain portions of it that have already been redacted.
Mitch, before you go, I just want to put out there, so what I'll do is give the board plenty of time to discuss. And after that, when the board feels like they're done for the moment, asking questions, et cetera. If there are questions from the public, please send those through Mike.
Just raise your hand, because we do not have the chat function operating currently on this. Mitch.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. I just want to put out, I'm a little concerned reviewing the documents. First of all, Mike, this is a very thorough process your team did, and it's excellently, superbly done. This took into account a lot of factors, I know you worked really hard. I know we received a lot of guidance on how this could be done properly in an unbiased way, and that's great. I'm a little concerned that the license for the proposed retail establishment, as part of the executive team for that license that's listed in these documents, is Stan Rosenberg, who I feel uncomfortable that he's involved with this because he wrote most of the legislation surrounding marijuana while he was in the state senate, and then was forced to resign due to impropriety regarding sexual and racial harassment allegations. So I'm not sure, from my perspective, this is a good fit for this community, given the folks involved.
My only comment, I guess.
That's all I have to say.
I understand the concern. My only comment to that is that part of the application was redacted for the review.
And it's not on your team, Mike. I'm saying you did a fantastic job, and I know that this was anonymously done and reviewed. It's just now that everything's come to light, it makes me a little bit uneasy that part of either this town's revenue, retail revenue, or tax money in terms of the review process is going to support an executive team that I think a lot of people would take question with.
So I don't know how much of this people were able to get through since having it several hours. If we are focusing on a couple of things, one of which obviously is the major document, the advisory working group memorandum, right, with the background and the grading. I think what we need to take from that is to remember that the rubric that they followed didn't necessarily take into consideration, Mitch, maybe some of the things that you were bringing up, right?
I agree with that, Sheila, but it's our decision. And I think if they didn't know that, I mean, it's something that I think the public is going to have concerns about and that we need to talk about.
Yeah, so if anybody wants to look, Mike, I saw it at one point, and I don't know that I could find it again. Is it under disclosures where there were background checks done? No, it's not.
No, that's in the RFI itself.
In the RFI, okay. I haven't seen it. So, does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Mike, I will start with one. So when I'm looking at your document, I just wanted to be clear, when I'm looking at the grades.
Yes.
The scores of A through F, where did I miss what A, B, you know, A through F means?
That was so you could differentiate. So the way that the process that was approved by the select board went was that the evaluator's name was not included on that. So as a way to follow that evaluator through the three companies, they got assigned a letter.
Thank you. You know what, I looked at that initially and thought, are these categories? So thank you.
No, it's evaluator designations. I will say too, because I should have said this earlier, there were two evaluators who asked if they could have permission to not evaluate on every section of the RFI because they thought that certain sections, like security plans and things like that, went outside of their purview. They were instructed they could only do that if they kept that same standard for all three applications. Someone could not go in and grade seven sections out of 10 on one, and then 10 out of 10 on another, and 5 out of 10. You could only do that if you kept the same number and only did the same sections for every applicant. That's why if you'll see evaluator C on all three applications is far below the scores of all the other evaluators. That's because that person only felt comfortable doing certain sections. And you'll see on the grading rubrics that you have there, if on the top corner it says EA, that's evaluator A, or EC, that's evaluator C. So you can actually see which evaluator's comments are there for each company too.
Mike, so now, if we were in public right now, these documents would have been released to us across the table and would be public. How will the documents be made public? Because they are not yet on, I think, the town of Rutland website, right?
They are not, but they certainly can be.
I think my next question, and I don't want to put you in a position where you feel like you're speaking for all the evaluators, I know you can't, is that out of the three applicants, we have two that are close in total score. And I'm wondering if you could speak to what a 40-point, 45-point difference means? Does that make sense? Is that a significant difference?
Sure. I can tell you again, we graded these before the discussion was brought up as to why these were brought up. Nor because this isn't a public body, it's an advisory working group of general employees. So there was no minutes or anything like that, because we do not fall under the open meeting law. However, the discussions that were had is site plan was one. Just better, it seemed better planning and better. I'm trying to think what else is said, because again, these are not my, just to reiterate that, my own opinions here. Better plan in place was what the majority of the group said there, without naming names and stuff like that, as the board has requested that we do not do.
Did the board, did our board members notice the two differences in location? And does anybody have a comment about that or preference?
What are the two locations, Mike?
So mass home growers and caregiver patient connection asked to be, or applied for saying that the location that they would be proposing is on Main Street, on the way to Holden, by the plaza there, where the current gravel pit is owned by CB Blair Builders. The other applicant, Red Cardinal, marked their location as the old garage that has the yellow barrels in front of it down by the four corners intersection on 121A. The proposals, one of the things in the RFI that was requested was building proposals and things you'd see there. And so the one on, both on Main Street, talked about constructing a new building and renting that out from the landlord. And the one on 122A talked about renovating the existing garage that is there and renting that out from that landlord.
So at this point, our options are to continue the discussion, to ask if there are any public comments, or to entertain a motion to sign a license.
Authorize me to enter into HCA.
Thank you. To authorize Mike to enter into HCA for two different things, right? For cultivation and adult use. We have two different ones. Those need to be separate. They are not at all connected.
One of the things I should have said in response to Jeff's comment earlier, and I'm sorry, I just thought of that now, is when an applicant picked up a copy of the RFI, we also gave them a copy of the zoning bylaw relating to marijuana in town. That way, they could see where cannabis industry businesses are allowed and where they are not in the town, so that they have that information right there in front of them.
So, I'm hearing crickets. I know this has been a long, arduous for Mike, at least, process. But I think we owe it to that working group to try to get through this. So I guess, if it's appropriate, could I ask each board member to give their thoughts? I'm not asking for a straw poll, I'm not asking you for a name. I'm just asking for a sort of general thought process, whether it's, I feel strongly, I think I know who I want, or I have a strong feeling about a location, or I have a strong feeling that I'd like to wait. Could I just, could I get that from each person?
So wait, Sheila, real quick, Mike, I'm not sure you answered directly. For the adult use, we had three applicants and two scored relatively close to each other. What, in terms, and it was less than a 10% difference, is that, that's correct, right?
Correct. Yes, the highest score was a 695, the next highest is a 650.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody want to go first? Wayne?
I'd like to get some more information about Mike's comments earlier about mass home growers. It's the first I've heard of any of it.
What question is that? Wayne?
Mike made some comments earlier about one of the owners.
No.
Oh, no, that was Mitch, first of all. So I didn't make that comment, but I'm happy to answer that. One of the people listed on the executive team for one of the companies, Red Cardinal, is the former senate president of the Commonwealth, that is no longer in office.
He was forced to resign. It's not like he's no longer in office because his term ran up. There were credible and proven allegations of sexual and racial harassment involved with that. And it just, I'm not sure this is a good fit for the town. That's really my only read. And if it came down to the retail license going to that company or a company that scored comparably, then, you know, I really think it matters, you know, who does business in this town. We're talking about the sale of a federally illegal substance in our town, and I think that the people really care about who's doing business here.
Was that fact known by the panel when they were?
No, it was not.
No.
So.
Again, that part was blacked out when we had the review of the application.
It's safe to say that we don't know if that would have impacted their decision.
Correct.
Well, so Wayne, I think we need to look at this more broadly. The understanding was that they were looking at the location of the parent company, right? And points were given if it was considered local. Red Cardinal happens to be based in Connecticut. I think relative to the names of the partners, which was Public Mike Wayne, as part of the application.
January 16th.
January 16th.
Oh, no, excuse me, as part of the application process. I'm sorry, the names of the companies were available January 16th.
But the partners' names?
The partners' names were available to us after we finished our full redacted review.
To you.
Which if you, yes.
Okay. Were they available to anyone doing research on the CCC site?
I mean, if you looked up the companies on the CCC site, you could probably find that information.
It was semi-public. I guess, Wayne, I think where I'm headed is. It was semi-public. I guess, Wayne, I think where I'm headed is that type of sort of, you know, let's do a Google search and see what news articles come up. It is probably valid for all of them. It just, it wasn't under the purview of the working group. I would, I would probably put out there that Stan Rosenberg, um, that's an easy Google search. There's a lot. Um, he's, you know, to Mitch's point, he's, he's a very public figure in the state. So you see that name and, and, uh, yeah.
Well, I just take it to red flag.
Okay. So what I'm hearing from you is that that gave you pause. Is that fair?
Say that again.
That gave you pause to sort of step back and say, I need to think about that. This is the highest score.
Absolutely.
But there's a name attached that comes with a little bit of a, a gray area. Okay. Thank you. Um, Jeff, can I get you?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that any of this serves the town's best interest. I echo Mitch's sentiment that this is, you know, clear late violation of federal law, um, which supersedes state law in there. So, uh, my question would be about the revenue, the 3% revenue that would, uh, that was mentioned in there. How would the town receive that 3% when I understand that the banks are not accepting proceeds derived from marijuana, cannabis, things like that, because it's federally insured institution in direct conflict of federal law. Not here to stir it up, but, uh, you asked me my opinion. Thanks.
Uh, to answer your question, Jeff, banks are not accepting it. However, credit unions are. And right now, the only credit union in the Commonwealth that is accepting that is GFA Federal Credit Union.
Doesn't that seem a little, little hinky? Why is the town involved in, in hinky business like this? You know, was this a speakeasy?
Cause they approved the license. They approved us going ahead with one.
Well, I mean, to that point too, the town voted no on it and then it, it got through. That was a special town meeting where they approved the license. So there was a much smaller turnout at that special town meeting that people that had voted, uh, voted years prior to not allow for, for the sale of it. So. I see Jeff's points.
I just want to throw this out there. I mean, again, this one, whatever decision the board goes with, where we go with that one. I, I understand that completely, is, um, under the current statute, um, because the town did not vote at town meeting after the legislation was passed to outright ban, the opening of these establishments in the town, um, it no longer has the ability to do that. Uh, you used to be able to do it at a town meeting if your community voted no on the initiative in, uh, November of 2016, you could, your town meeting could vote to outright ban the sale of cannabis products. Or if you voted no, or you voted yes, um, you could have a local town election to ban the sale of cannabis related products in the town. The CCC, uh, proposed legislation before the legislature last year, and it was passed that now if, um, you didn't outlaw it, it's legal in the town. Uh, and you cannot force these shops not to open um, unless you were one of those towns that had previously banned its sale outright in the town.
So just to clarify, we voted no in 2016 and then failed to act at town meeting corresponding to the 2016 vote.
Acted oppositely at town meeting and set the bylaw that says these are where sales are allowed. So thus that allowed it in the town.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
And just to get, the no vote was at the ballot and, and the state overall voted to approve it, which was why we had that flexibility to move forward and say, okay, well, the state approved it, but we said no, we could still say no. And the town came back and said, oh, no, it, it, and it was close. And I, I don't think, is Nita still with us? I know I need to have the, uh, the percentages for a long time posted.
I think there were only, there were less than 70 people at that meeting.
No, I mean, the percentages from the ballot from back in 2016.
It was close. It was within 2%, I want to say, Sheila.
In any case, I, I, I don't know that that's really a question in, I don't know.
There was an outright ban proposed at the special town meeting of 2018 and the town meeting denied that or voted down that ban as a bylaw and voted in the other one. Um, Sheila, Jeff has his hand up too, just in case you couldn't see.
Thank you. Um, I just want to point out that with the board's support and vote approval, you set a precedence. The town has now set a precedence on which specific federal law we would like to abide by. Okay. So we have said that as far as Title 21, the drug enforcement laws, we're going to ignore that. We can, we can ignore that. Okay. We understand. Yeah. But because the state legislature did this, this, this. Yeah. But, okay. We know, anybody who's taken civics knows that, uh, federal law trumps. No pun intended in there. But just, I mean, it's not, it's not the end of, it'll be all for me. Uh, but I am a, I'm a rules person. And this is against the rules. And if we are going to set precedence that we get to pick and choose, I, I would like to set a marker, uh, on this topic for the next time that the stormwater EPA issue comes up on how we're going to find the $70, $80,000 a year to pick up your grass clippings. Because the EPA has set, uh, new rules that we need to, you know, dispose of grass clippings this way. We set a precedence that we can ignore that. And I want to ignore that. And I won't go on record that I would like to ignore the EPA, uh, in there and probably most of the IRS in there also if we, if we can. So put two placeholders on there for me. So.
Leah.
Two grass issues.
Leah.
I honestly came in here kind of figuring we trusted Mike with the committee to make the recommendations. But there is pause given the unredacted, um, information. So I'm kind of, you know, I was kind of ready to, unless there are any major red flags, go with Mike and the committee's recommendations. They've spent the most time with it. We trusted Mike and the committee to make those recommendations. Obviously with the information that they didn't have, now that gives me a little bit of pause.
I guess my, my question lay it to then you and to Wayne similarly, is the retail license. There were two groups that scored within 10% of each other. The second was a bit lower, but it was negligible. Out of the total score over 600 points, it was within 10%. So I mean, I, it's, if it comes down to a question of, you know, who we're going to be dealing with as a town in terms of executive leadership and community liaison, you know, we're looking at two very closely scored applicants. I would rather just err on the side of caution and go with the second applicant that scored again, almost nearly identical in, in terms of their recommendation from the committee.
Can I ask what the site location for that second applicant was proposed as?
Uh, the Main Street gravel pit.
Well, the one that Mitch was referring to, uh,
Four corners.
Cardinal was Crossroads 122.
Yep. Yep.
But somebody real close, where did they want to put their?
The one, the, the one who came in second was on Main Street.
So would be Main Street also, and then across the street would be the grow, uh, the gravel pit, would be the cultivation. The cultivation would be at the gravel pit?
Oh, I see. Yeah. Is there a cultivation location within those application documents? I didn't see that.
Uh, so.
Are we moving, are we switching between retail and cultivation? It's absolutely confusing.
No, I just wanted to clarify what was going to be in that one location altogether.
Yeah. So two applicants applied for the same spot and that's what the issue is there. I should say these proposed sites are not be all end all. They just have to show that they have a plan in place for somewhere where they could go. Cause we can't control a landlord tenant issue that way. Um, however, um, the cultivation proposal is listed as an addendum to the same company that submitted it for a retail sale use. So it's everything that's in that retail sale application plus that addendum at the end.
So did the working group address the, what would happen, what the sort of domino effect would be if the company that applied for both didn't get its retail, didn't, didn't win the, the retail license? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, that did get brought up in discussion. Again, we took it as a, as a see what they work with with the landlord. And if not, that actually all gets ironed out in the special permit process with the planning board.
Okay, Mike, you had, just to be clear, so everyone, I guess on the same page. The Mass Home Growers applied for both retail and cultivation. They were the only cultivation applicant. So you're recommending, or your committee recommended that you entered into negotiations for Mass Home Growers on cultivation only. And then go with one of the higher scored applicants for retail.
Correct. Um, yes, the, um, again, the Select Board, when they released the RFI for the non-adult use marijuana establishments, uh, because we have five of them, we didn't have as strict of a grading rubric. And the committee felt that Mass Home Growers had the, um, wherewithal in their application to successfully do cultivation.
What's non-adult use? Juvenile?
No, no, excellent question. Non-adult use is everything that's not what is referred to colloquially as recreational marijuana. So non-adult use is manufacturing, it's cultivation, it's, uh, lab research, it's, um, there's a list in the zoning bylaw itself that, uh, specifies what those are. Uh, the Cannabis Control Commission has asked all cities and towns to not use the phrase recreational marijuana because of the inherent connection with the word recreational and kid friendly activities.
This is unreal, you know?
Well, you want to see done, Mitch?
So, like, sorry, if I may, I have a question. Given the close scoring in the first, for the first two, for the, uh, retail sales, adult retail sales. Was any, I'm looking at the scoring rubrics now, but I don't know if you know off the top of your head, was there any major concerns about the location? Did one score, one location score higher than the other from your team? Like?
Overall, among the six of them, that was one of the things that helped differentiate the number one or the highest score with the second highest score, um, in terms of uh, potential redevelopment of a kind of rundown area of the town and, um, easier access in terms of traffic and the building was already there.
Well, I guess another question too, Mike, is, and you said Red Cardinals out of Connecticut, Caregiver Patient Connections, are they out of Berry?
Correct.
So I mean, they're, they're also, the other thing is that it's a local company as well. See, to Jeff's question as to what I would like to see done, if that's the case, then I say my recommendation would be as a board, um, we would, uh, want you to move forward with your cultivation, um, you know, agreement. But I would, I would honestly rather see the, the retail license go to the local company uh, out of Caregiver Patient Connection, uh, simply due to the fact that the scoring was so close. If there was, if there was a huge discrepancy in scoring, I would say, let's go back and take another look at it if there were red flags. But because it was really closely scored, um, you know, I just, I think that's a safer choice for the community. It would make people feel more comfortable, I guess, to Jeff's point, as comfortable as they can feel selling a federally illegal substance.
Mike, wasn't, wasn't there like an interview panel process of the two close applicants?
Yeah, all three applicants had the opportunity to come in and present information, um.
But you factored that into your, your proposal, right?
No, so these are not, I mean, yes, but, well, no, we did not actually. Because you'll see that was only if these numbers on the rubrics came into, came to a tie. So since we did not have any that were exactly equal to each other, we did not factor those in.
Mike, a quick question. In your, uh, your panel, your group's recommendations, was it unanimous? Or was it there? Um, or is it not unanimous?
The, let me just take a quick look here before I give a full thing on that one. You can see that the scores for all but one applicant followed a very, all but two applicant, no, all but one applicant followed a very similar trend in terms of how the just general scores that they did on their own came in.
So it's interesting, uh, you know, and I think Mitch alluded to this, when we look at these scores and how close they are. There's not one evaluator situation when you pair them that's not relatively consistent. So for example, we didn't have, it's not a situation where the 45 point difference is because of one person. It's very consistently just slightly lower across all six of the evaluators. It's kind of interesting.
Mitch, your microphone's off again.
Uh, microphone's off?
No, you're good. We got you now.
Oh, no.
That's usually how these, these processes work, uh, when you have working groups that you'll discuss things and then they'll, you know, people, when they generally are close, come to a similar consensus. So I mean, that wouldn't, that doesn't really surprise me at all.
I, I need to correct myself. One evaluator did score Caregiver Patient Connection a little bit higher. Tiny bit. Okay, um, I'm going to give the board five minutes. Are there any comments from? I see no hands go up on Zoom. Mike, do you see anything?
No, not on mine.
I'm sorry, what do you mean? Uh, Sheila, you're going to give the board five minutes?
No, I didn't even mean five minutes, just to sort of breathe there in case there were some public comments.
Okay, I was going to say.
Uh, so we finally have our information in front of us. Uh, we do have, you know, if you want to call it easy, we have a quote, easy applicant, i.e. the cultivation. Um, if somebody wanted to start with that and then move on to the adult use retail.
Make a motion to, uh, allow the town administrator to enter into negotiations with Mass Home Growers regarding the cultivation, uh, license, knowing that this is not a granting of that license, but just a negotiation process.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
For city, I.
Wait, my eye.
Dylan's no.
Deby. So that's four to one. And adult use?
I'd make a motion that the board allow, again, the town administrator to enter into negotiations with patient caregiver. Um, I'm sorry, the appropriate name of the company there, uh, company out of Berry, uh, for the, uh, retail license. Knowing again, this is not the issuance of that license, but this is negotiation.
I have a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call.
For city, I.
Dylan's no.
Sorry, Wayne, can you repeat?
What can I?
Deby. So that's four yes, one no. That is granted for Mike to begin negotiations with Caregiver Patient Connection out of Berry. Um, I'm going to move on. We have talked about, I'm going back to the agenda. We've talked about the annual town election, the annual uh, Mike, under warrant, I noticed that it says, this is the Select Board's first view of the proposed articles. I think that was a sentence from last time.
Yeah, that was a copy and paste from the last meeting. My apologies for that.
We have seen them. Um, does the board, we had a very good conversation, I thought, with the FinCom. Does the board want to go over the warrant requests anymore tonight? Um, or do you feel like we're in a good place considering we're not placing them yet? Anybody specific they wanted to talk about more relative to the, the article request? Again, this is for money requests, free cash.
You got a meeting on Thursday, right?
Yep.
I got a headache.
I think we're fine right where we are right now without input from the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd kind of be content to listen to the Finance Committee. And I think there's so much up in the air that having those conversations with them really provided a lot of guidance. And I felt good about it. I don't know how they felt, but.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I felt like we had a path forward. Um, obviously we were waiting, Mike, there were a couple of things that people asked about. We were going to get more information for, but I don't know that it's even worth talking about before Thursday, right? right?
Yeah, I would, I would wait until the next time that the board has a meeting with the finance committee.
Is there anything new on the budget? I know we talked about having the board take a kind of deep dive look into this history on the stabilization of the cherry sheet.
That information's in your, in your packets for this evening. It's the same information that was in your packets for last Thursday.
Yeah. This is our issue, it is 8/11 and so I think sometimes by the time we get to this point, the board gets a little, get a little tired. Did anybody have any questions for the moment about what they're looking at? Or maybe what might be more productive is, is there anything that you would like to very specifically discuss with FinCom on Thursday so that we can send a memo to them, kind of prepare them and say, you know what, we'd really like to kind of go over this piece this time, it would help.
I mean, I think my big question to them was, sorry, the dog's cooking his toy, was the, their sense of going to 112 versus not for setting town meeting? That was a conversation, you know, that I think needs to be ongoing, but having their input and expertise, I think is important.
Okay, we do still have quite a bit of business. So unless anybody has specific things, you could continue, obviously, to send these requests to Mike so you can get them over to the FinCom in time. Again, if we have sort of pieces that we attack each week, I think we'll make some progress. And maybe this is the week for cherry sheet and what our worst case scenarios are. I know, remember Dan said, you know, we've got 78% of our tax dollars are coming straight out of property taxes. But the rest we have to account for and account for losses. Under new business, we have a series of documents that I believe within their two frames, 113 non-union and 114 union are all similar, right Mike?
Yes.
You want to tell us about these?
Sure, I was approached by several department heads during the ongoing pandemic situation about the use of vacation time, given the current restrictions that are put in place. After four separate department heads came up to me separately about asking about if the town was thinking of doing anything, because right now, all the time that we give our employees is use it or lose it by June 30th and it all re-ups on July 1st. The town's current policy is that sick time is the only, a lot of time off that rolls over from one fiscal year to the next. All other time is a use or lose. We upfront 160 hours of sick time on July 1st. It's three weeks for non-department heads and then department heads, it's a little higher for vacation time, everyone gets three personal days. And then last year, the board adopted a sick incentive time where if you don't use sick time during the course of one month, you get three hours of sick incentive time that's treated similar to personal time. And that's to try to cut down our overtime costs, which has actually been working quite well. So the proposed, once, once I got this request from four separate department heads independently of each other and not as a group, I put out a poll to the department heads to see how one, this, if we were to do this, would this affect your department's operations? Two, should we do this at all? Or, and three, if we do, how much? Because all four department heads who came to see me, while they all had the same intent, came with different time allotments requested to carry over. The time allotment request came from all unused vacation time to partial, one week, two week, a week and a half. So I just put out the, I'll call to all department heads. Every department head responded, as did the chairman of the Board of Health, because that department doesn't officially have a department head to it, but it does have employees in it. Our union departments had some recommendation, our non-union departments have a different recommendation. So I actually brought the issue to town council to see what their recommendation on everything is. So the proposals you have before you are based on the results of the poll of the department heads, discussions with town council, discussions with my counterparts in other towns as to things that they're doing for their towns. And I honestly have to say that none of this is my original idea, but just the employees kind of looking out for each other. So the non-union proposal is to this year only, and if you notice, there's a clause in that resolution that says this year only to allow non-union staff members to carry over two weeks of time. The difference between that and the union proposal of carrying over one week of time into the next fiscal year is that if you look at the budget, our non-union personnel colas were cut as part of the expenses. So it was kind of a olive branch to help with that that's there. And this is all unused time. We're not adding two weeks of time to anyone's plate. It's if you have it, you have it. If you don't, we're not gonna add extra time. And if you used it, you used it. It's kind of that simple. But those are the two options there. Our unions get a little different with each other based on the recommendations of their department head, based on how they thought that their department operation requirements would need to be met. But overall, it's one week of time for the unions, two weeks of time for the non-union, based on the fact that in the next fiscal year, our unions are getting pay raises through their contractual increases and our non-union personnel are not.
That's your recommendation, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Can I get a motion for the non-union by itself? The document as presented?
Have to see the non-union, is that the first? Is it?
The non-union is up to two weeks of unused time, right Mike? Not?
Yeah, not too solid. It's if you have, say I have a week and a half left, I'm only getting that week and a half. I'm not adding that extra half week back on to their time.
So I guess the motion would be to allow the, oh, sorry, we're going non-union or unit first, Sheila?
This is.
Let's do non-union.
This would be to adopt the resolution for non-union vacation time carryover as presented.
So I guess I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution as presented for, to allow for non-union carryover in vacation time. With the caveat that we truly value our employees and understand this is kind of a tough position for them to be in right now.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
For city, I.
Walker, I.
Wait, man, I.
I, did I miss somebody?
Jeff and Mitch just both said yes at the same time.
Hi.
Thank you. Unanimous, thank you very much. Now, on the union, Mike, I'm looking and they look the same, are they exactly the same?
No. This would be to authorize me to enter into short-term negotiations for those documents for later approval by the select board.
So unfortunately, in this motion, I need somebody to specifically for the record note each of the locals.
What we could be doing, and I will put that list up in a second too, because that actually does need to be made in the motion. What we could do too is approve pending union approval. That's what I would recommend to do, that way we can just get these signed and done it over with like we do the non-union personnel. For the, again, this does not have a budget impact on next year because there's caveats in all of these, including the non-union personnel, that all time off has to be approved by the department head. It also doesn't say that they have to use all of next year's time and the carryover. If they get to a point where the department head doesn't approve the vacation time because they need certain department stuff, there's actually clauses in these MOAs and in the resolution for the non-union personnel that unless the department head approves it or for the department heads, unless I approve it, that that can't be used. So this isn't a guarantee that you will use all of that, nor is it a requirement that you have to use all of that, it's just the ability to do that. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that there isn't a budgetary impact for next fiscal year.
I guess just to that point, Mike, can we just also, I know that you're obviously keeping mindful the fact that, one, we want to support employees the most, in any way we can, and we know that they can't take trips or get it because of what's going on if they have planned vacation. But we also want to make sure too, that, you know, for those departments that are essential, that are necessary, that we kind of, you know, just remind the department heads that to schedule vacations around that, you know, specifically like, you know, DPW, police, fire, we have events, things like that. So just to be mindful of that when there's schedule.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, just to that point, to our current existing collective bargaining contracts with police, both police, fire and dispatch, completely forbid taking time off on July 3rd or 4th for reasons, we're probably going to evaluate how that goes with the current situation with the parade. But the two chiefs said that they would prefer an option between the two because of how staffing went over the year, over the course of the year. Now, again, we cannot mix expenses with salary line items per state law, but be how, how with staffing went over the year with overtime and with different costs there that we give those two, those three unions the option of either getting a week's flat payout of their vacation time this one time only, and there's a clause in there saying that they can't use this to come back to us in negotiations that they'd have to sign off on and, or carry over up to one week of time. Dispatch, due to their budget and staffing changes where they had to use less of their part timers this year, has requested just the one week payout. Again, this does not carry over into next year and we've confirmed that that's in their budget. And DPW is just carry over a week of time into next year. We checked these with all our finance team. Again, none of these were my ideas, these are ones that department heads came to me with after this came out.
Looking forward to get this through for the motion.
Yeah. Mike, do you have a list in front of you? I mean, I can read them off.
No, I've got them. Yeah. It's.
Then somebody can make the motion as per his reading of the list.
Yeah. So this, what we would need is a motion to authorize me to sign these on behalf of the town and enter into these agreements with Mass Cop Local 33, Mass Cop Local 435, ASME Local 806, Rutland Professional Firefighters Association and the Rutland Police Sergeants Union.
I'll make a motion echoing exactly what the town administrator just said the motion should be.
Tamika, you got that? Thank you. Is there a second?
Mike, could you email me that list, just so I make sure I get it correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right, I heard a second, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
For city, I.
Dylan's, I.
Walker, I.
Wait, man, I.
You buy? Unanimous, thank you so much.
One, thank you, welcome. One final comment I just want to make on that is I want just to outright say flat out that I fully respect everything that our union employees are doing and all the services that they do provide for the town. I understand this looks a little different, but it's just the differences in pay raises that caused the majority of the department heads to request that separation there. However, everyone provides essential services to our town and I can't thank our staff enough for all the professional services that they provide day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you. We're almost there. Under correspondence, we have a letter from MIA, that's sort of good news, I guess, Mike?
Yes, this letter from MIA, M-I-A, it's the town's insurance agency, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency, informing us that, let me just get the actual language for you here. Basically, over the course of the next year, or excuse me, the remainder of this year, unless our insurance costs are over $5,000, they will not be billing us as part of their COVID relief help is helping towns save money that way. If we, if our premiums do not cost us $5,000 over the next three months, we won't be billed for it. There's also a letter from them about a FY21 renewal that was mentioned last week at the finance committee meeting. It did come in a little higher than we budgeted for, but that was due to a workers' comp claim that we currently have outstanding.
Do you know, Mike, FinCom probably asked this already, but this, this 12.4%, that wasn't inclusive of the 3% prepaid premium rate? The discount?
Correct.
Still not great, okay.
Yeah, that, this is the, one second, if I just could. This is part of the contract that the select board signed last year that said we will get the middle rate of whatever MIA had this year if we agreed to what they had last year. So this is the mid rate there and this includes health insurance, workers' comp insurance and property and liability insurance.
I just had a question, if we were to go to a 112, how does that impact the prepay? Because it says if the balance is paid by August 1st, 2020, then there's a 3% premium discount, but if we're at a 112, how's that look?
We wouldn't be able to pay that.
All right, is there any other business to come before the board?
I mentioned this earlier in my COVID update, but just because someone talked about making a point about this in our meetings at the public watch, because we never know who's watching, but just once again, congratulations to our 20 residents who have fully recovered and been released from quarantine from the COVID-19 virus and to those seven residents that are still fighting the disease and to Detective Sanji, your town is all behind you and we support you and are wishing you the best for your recovery.
All right, so we are now about to go into our first executive session remotely for meeting. We have a couple of things that we need to put out there, one of which is we typically do a motion to go into executive session, excuse me, only to return to open session for the purpose of adjournment. However, in this case, we are going to close this meeting, this Zoom conference will be closed and the board needs to log into a Zoom meeting that has a password attached to it, which means we will not be re-entering to go into open session for the purpose of adjournment.
We will be adjourning from executive session.
So we're adjourning now separately?
This, this meeting's minutes will mark that we went into executive session and then will note the date that the board, the time that the board closed during executive session on the minutes of that meeting. However, under the.
So if we're not adjourning, if we're not adjourning now, do we just log out and then log back in?
Yes, there's a separate Zoom situation that I will be sending out again, was sent out to all board members this afternoon.
So do we leave on like one, two, three, go? Or how do you want to do it?
I need the motion to go into executive session. I do need to note that we will be adjourning from the meeting full within the executive session, that we will not be returning to public in order to do that.
All right, so I'll make a motion to have the board go into executive session with the note that we will be adjourning from our meeting at the end or conclusion of executive session.
Thank you. And the reason is for dispatch union contracts. Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll call.
For city, I.
Walker, I.
Dylan's, I.
Wait, man, I.
You buy? Thank you very much to everybody that stayed with us through the public question and we'll see you Thursday or two weeks.